Good evening, everyone. A perfect reminder, a couple items of business. Please take this moment to silence your cellphones or put them on vibrate. What else do we have? Oh, of course, you are being recorded as the meeting is being livestreamed, so I just want to let you know. Two cameras right back there. This is a committee meeting, but regardless of committee, when you do make public comments, please come to the microphone and make your comments into the microphone. That way, you can be heard not just by us, but also on the livestream. Please endeavor, unless otherwise asked or instructed, to keep your comments to three minutes in length, though of course, each councilperson is the chair of their respective committees. Before we get off to the races, I just want to take half a moment to congratulate my council colleague, Mr. Jamie Arroyo, on his new, is it executive director or CEO? New CEO position at the nonprofit ASATS. So I just want to thank him. And with that, Mr. Harris, may we have the roll call of members?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Arroyo.
Here.
Ms. Baker.
Here.
Here.
Ms. Gregg.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Ms. Walsh.
Here.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Here, thank you. We go then to the approval of the May 2nd, 2022 minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council comments on the minutes. Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Mr. Calixty.
Aye.
Ms. Gregg.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Ms. Walsh.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye, thank you very much. We go then to the Personnel Committee. Counselor colleagues, take it away.
Thank you, Council President. For tonight, the Personnel Committee has three items for the agenda tonight. And the first item is the nomination of Karen Polite for appointment to the Lancaster City Land Bank Authority. And the second item is the nomination of Hendrix Jackson for appointment to the redevelopment authority of the Lancaster City. And the third item is the nomination of Chris Deavies for appointment to the Downtown Improvement Are there any of those nominees here tonight with us?
I think they're all here. So that's Ms. Polite to the right.
Ms. Polite, would you please come forward? Thank you, Ms. Polite. Thank you for your willingness to serve. And would you please tell us the reason why you want to serve in that position?
Yes, sure. My name is Dr. Karen Polite, and I am a lifelong resident of City of Lancaster. I value city living and city life, and I'd like to serve on the Land Bank Committee to contribute my knowledge and experience of living in the city and city life.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about some of your goals during your term?
Some of my goals during my term is to contribute to creating the goals and priorities of the redevelopment and reuse of vacant properties in the city, to be able to have a say in that.
Well, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the other members of the committee?
Counselor colleagues, thank you. Dr. Polite, thank you so much for being here this evening. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for your willingness to serve. I know that a number of folks were seeking this position, and I'm really pleased to see you brought forward for the nomination. And I know that this particular authority may be coming more active, and I'm glad to see you stepping up to do that, and thank you so much for your willingness to serve.
All right. Is there any more questions? Are there any more questions from the member of the committee?
Counselor colleagues.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Polite, for your willingness to share and serve on the Land Bank Authority. I really appreciate what you're stepping forward to do. I know we've talked many times about serving in some capacity, and this was a wise choice for you. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council members as a whole? Oh, thank you so much for your willingness to help, and congratulations. Now, I'd like to make a motion to move this nomination to our next council meeting on June 14.
Second.
All in favors?
Aye.
Thank you. Is Mr. Hendrix Jackson here? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
How are you doing today?
I am doing fantastic, feeling blessed.
That's good to hear. And Mr. Jackson, would you please tell us the reason why you want to serve the committee?
Well, I was born and raised here in Lancaster. My father, Henry Esters, had 26 houses that he took care of, and I was working on them since I was 14. 1970, he bought the house that I live in now. And so I seen a lot of Lancaster and seen a lot of the houses, and how they was taken care of, and I would like to make an improvement on that to help the City of Lancaster have better housing for people. A lot of people don't know about the rules and the ways of taking care of houses and the things that need to be done. I am currently a master electrician that owns my own company, and I think that I could really put an effort into the City of Lancaster to make it a better place to live.
Okay, thank you. That's good to hear. Are there any other questions from the member of the committee? No? From the council as a whole?
Counselor colleagues.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, for your willingness to serve. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. I love this city.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Congratulations.
All right.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to move this nomination to our next council meeting on June 14.
Second.
All in favors?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, let's go to Chris Deavies.
Good afternoon, sir. How are you doing?
Good evening, counselor. Good to see you. Hello, counselors.
And Mr. Chris, would you please tell us why you want to continue serving?
Certainly. And actually, this is a new role for me. This has, this job with the Downtown Improvement District traditionally, I believe, has been within the scope of responsibilities of the Director of Economic Development. Over the past few years, Patrick Hopkins has been serving in that role. I really appreciate him stepping in to do that work. Now, I'll be swapping in to take the reins. I'm really looking forward to it. As most of you know, I have been a public servant for my whole career. That entire career has focused on local community development. The Downtown Improvement District is one very important tool to achieve that work. My past career in Washington, DC, there was a Downtown Business Improvement District, and actually several improvement districts within the city that I worked very closely with, and really enjoyed that work, and I'm looking forward to doing it here as well.
Oh, thank you. Would you please tell us what do you wish to accomplish on this new role?
Sure. I think one of the things that I can bring to the table is a city planning perspective to the Downtown Improvement District. I think there are questions about how the Downtown Improvement District grows and changes over time as the city grows and changes, and that really speaks to the work that we're doing and the city's comprehensive plan and the update to the Building on Strength Economic Development Plan. So I think there's really an opportunity to help tie that work together with the Downtown Improvement District.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the member of the committee?
Counselor colleagues.
Please go ahead.
Not a question for any Director Dels, but just a thank you for, one, because I know Mr. Hopkins is gladly stepping off, and thank you for taking that place, but also appreciative that you're willing to bring your economic development and community planning perspective to that authority.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other questions from the member of the committee? From council as a whole? Okay, from the public? Thank you, Mr. Deavies. Congratulations. I appreciate your willingness to serve.
Thank you so much. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to make a motion to move this nomination to our regular next regular council meeting on June 14.
Second.
All in favors?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Counselor, thank you, Counselor colleagues. We'll go next to community planning, which is Counselor Craig, but I'll actually take a moment to remind everyone, because it dawns on me, I didn't do this at the top of the meeting, that we are on an adjusted schedule this summer. Of course, we have the committee meeting that you're currently sitting in, and we have the regularly scheduled second Tuesday council meeting, but we will not have the fourth Tuesday council meeting in June, July, or August. So if you come here, you'll find the door locked and be disappointed. Anyway, Counselor Craig.
Thank you, Council President. Community planning is in order. The first item, we have three items on the agenda this evening. The first item on the agenda is the review of the Historical Commission recommendations for Adamsbury Associates LP project at 213 College Avenue. And presenting for that would be Mr. Douglas Smith.
Good evening. Good evening, counselors. Douglas Smith, chief planner for the city. I just wanted to add that I don't have many remarks to make, but this project was approved unanimously by the members in attendance at the Historical Commission meeting. We've done a very thorough review of this project. I'm sure that the developer could add additional context, but just wanted to say that we've had a very robust conversation on this, and the staff have really reviewed this very thoroughly. From a planning perspective, of course, there are many benefits to this project. We have provided context letters for the Historical Commission on planning perspective going, actually, as of several months ago, to look at zoning issues, land development, and other issues holistically alongside the historical process. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. That was factored into the discussion this last time. I'm happy to answer questions or clarifications about this project and where it goes from here, if you have them, but for any more technical questions about the historical review process, I'll defer to the developer present.
Thank you, Douglas. I don't have any questions at the moment. We've discussed this, I mean, very thoroughly on several different occasions. Are there questions from the committee? Are there any questions from the public? Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon. It's my first time here. It's very exciting.
Well, that's very nice. You want to give us your name?
Thank you.
And street?
Sure. I'm Joel Egan, and I live at 629 West Chestnut Street.
Thank you.
My objection to this project has nothing to do with the new neighbors we are eager to welcome. I support, indeed, all of us who are active in pushing back on the proposed project, welcome the expansion of affordable housing in our city and indeed in our neighborhood. When initially approached about the affordable housing venture, we welcome the opportunity to knit new neighbors into a diverse community. However, our gradual recognition that a 30-unit, three-story structure would be replaced by a 62-unit, five-to-six-story structure has placed us in the unenviable position of appearing to object to the presence of affordable housing in our area, and nothing could be further from the truth, since we considered ourselves as partners in this venture from its inception. The problem is not the fact of the building, it's the design. For example, we've been shown renderings of this proposed building in the Historical Commission meeting, also in the newspaper, but not how the structure will appear on Elm Street. Their neighbors will have to live next to a building three stories higher than any of their homes, a mere six feet from the curb, and the very concerning impact of additional traffic on a distressingly narrow street that serves children leaving two nearby schools. It didn't have to be this way. We have every faith that HDC can construct an affordable housing project in our neighborhood that enhances rather than detracts from the neighborhood. My neighbors and I stand willing to work with them to accomplish this as we expanded much-needed affordable housing in Lancaster City. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments from the public?
It's tough when you get old. Barry Russell, 200 block of Elm Street. I stand with a group of neighbors who reside on Elm, Chestnut, and Walnut Streets, people who have come together to help find the best solution for the College Avenue project. We are a community of young folks and older, single and partnered, babies, toddlers, and young adults, professionals and retired, city, a brand-new firefighter on our block, and county employees, architects and housing specialists, business owners, renters and homeowners, long-term residents, and new neighbors, a mix of socio-economic statuses. We now have a neighbor list with close to 100 neighbors who support this effort, including the dozen-plus residents who will be most affected by this proposal. For this effort, we are committed to two things: supporting affordable housing, not just anywhere, as folks in last Thursday's LNP column stated, and showing cause why this particular project is wrong for the neighborhood, community, and affordable housing efforts as we move forward. We can and do hold both these things with equal measure. Unlike the characterizations in LNP, we are not a group of elitist, nimby folks, but instead of a group that has shown compassion, passion, and reasonableness. And certainly, nothing we have said or done indicates our opposition to this project because of its affordable housing designation. It's just not a very well-thought-out design. We have done extensive research and conversed with experts, including Dr. Leroy Hopkins, who agrees this project is out of scope and takes the affordable housing effort back decades. There are no best practices or standards being presented with this project that coincide with current research and procedures as regards to affordable housing. I'm not going to restate the many concerns we have expressed thus far concerning the technical aspects of this project. They've been shared at several commission meetings and through various types of correspondence. We would be glad to forward that information, or better yet, sit down and have a community I would like to talk about the importance of citizen engagement in general and neighborhood engagement in particular, something Mayor Sarachi has repeatedly referred to, and now her administration has generated a cabinet-level neighborhood engagement department. Citizen engagement, we all agree, is essential to solving many problems, including affordable housing, but our collective experience seeking equal engagement has not been realized. Of course, we have been able to attend the Planning, Historic, and Traffic Commission meetings, and yes, we did share our concerns, but at none of the meetings was our engagement reciprocated. Further, the meetings were biased in favor of the developer, and we, as engaged neighbors, were never permitted to present our concerns in an effective way.
Mr. Russell, I'm just going to ask you to wind it down. Thank you.
Yes. So my next statement, I'm going to go longer than three minutes, if you don't mind.
We are already at 3 minutes and 30 seconds, so just to keep that in mind.
We prepared our remarks and gathered our data ahead of time, hoping for a meaningful exchange, but the developer was not willing to respond to our specific concerns, and it was clear from the start that the developers did not intend to interact with the lowly citizens. So much for engagement. Given this repeated experience, we're left to wonder: who assures the citizens' voices are heard and taken seriously? How do we obtain any useful response to our concerns? We understand the need for limits on time at the podium and the number of speakers during public dialogue, but what's the point of allowing us to speak if we're not really being heard? The PA Right-to-Know Law clearly explains the guidelines for both meetings and agendas, but those same right-to-know guidelines defer to the citizens' rights when topics discussed are sensitive to the community, affect a large number of people in the community, or the effects on the community are far-reaching. The reason for this is that any communication is universally recognized as essential to any solution, and people deserve to be heard and to know, not just hope, that their concerns are taken into account and they are truly part of the process of finding a solution. We therefore again make a request that a dedicated meeting, including pertinent stakeholders who are willing to truly engage, be held, and soon, to discuss the College Avenue project.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
I'm not quite done yet.
We are at five minutes. We're done. I'm sorry. Mr. Russell, I'm cutting you off.
One item I'd like to broach tonight is the massive scope of the College Avenue project.
Mr. Russell, I said we're done. You've had five minutes. You've had more time. I've met with you personally. Let's move on. Thank you. Please feel free to pass your comments along to the next member of your group, who I'm sure will be approaching the podium shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Are there further comments or questions from the public?
I'll go, I'll try to be as brief. I represent the old person in the group that Barry alludes to. My name is Jay Rosenthal. I reside on the 600 block of West Chestnut Street.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you all today. I speak on behalf of many of the neighbors immediately surrounding the proposed development. Our group of neighbors have been opposed to the development given its size, which is totally out of scale with the surrounding historic homes, safety as it relates to the proximity of the project to the neighboring homes, along with impeded access to the entire structure, given no fire lane or alleyway or driveway to the south of the structure, and of course, traffic and parking-related issues, given the limited number of parking spaces for those 64 units. Thankfully, HDC did adjust their project to eliminate that entrance on Elm Street. However, there's still the one further to the north that has not yet been really discussed because it's apparently a WPE's project, and HDC is not aware of what's going to happen there, but we certainly would like to understand what's going to happen there, because that could impede again the traffic flow on Elm Street. I, along with many of our concerned neighbors, have attended the various meetings with zoning, historic, planning, and traffic, and will attend the Shade Tree Commission in the weeks ahead. We have also held many meetings with council members, city staff, HDC, and written numerous letters and op-eds of concern as it relates to this project. While we can appreciate the process, there is no seamless process between these commission meetings, and much has been disregarded at clearly each of these meetings. The voting to approve in favor of HDC's development has advanced. It is interesting that recently LNP articles and attendees at the various meetings have spoken out in favor of affordable housing and lauded the efforts of HDC. Our collective issues have never been about affordable housing and have always welcomed affordable housing to our neighborhood. It has always been about the size of the development when it was first announced to the community. It was discussed as a 30-unit affordable housing apartment building, which was favorable to the community. When HDC decided to increase the scope to 64 units, it was not acceptable, as it would now scale some 54 feet above grade and span the distance of College Avenue to Elm Street and be 5 and 1/2 feet from the rear of the homes along West Chestnut Street. Historic Commission states that their responsibility lies with the streetscape, but what about any consideration for the massing of the structure all along that perimeter, leading from College to Elm Street? It seems inexcusable that no consideration is allowed for this. Imagine a structure towering over your backyard that is five stories tall, where just today there is only a one-story building and a surface parking lot. The neighbors simply desire this development to be scaled back to the original proposal of 30 units. Again, we are not against affordable housing. We are against the size of the structure. I'm trying to move along. At the recent Historic Commission meeting, Ms. Keppelring referenced watchtowers proximity of the five row homes along West End as her logic in approving the HDC development. That section of the watchtower is four stories high and is set back from the rear of the row home garages by some 30 feet, not 5 and 1/2 feet. And those homes have a private driveway into the rear of their homes, something we have asked the developers to design into their development. Again, the backyards of those row homes along West End are not 5 and 1/2 feet from the towering wall of an apartment building like we will experience. I have some pictures that I'm just going to pass along real quickly that will show you three things that I'm going to end. The first one is what you would see from the backyards of our homes along West Chestnut Street. So those homes that would be right in front of that structure. The second one is the watchtower building, which represents this 30-foot distance, hidden behind shrubs and trees and so on. And the last one is the crossings, the school crossings at F&amp;M, the new apartment building that shows the five-story apartment structure, 15 feet back but cascading up. Imagine it 5 and 1/2 feet from your backyard. So I wanted to pass those three out, and then essentially just ask that this committee is to not approve this project and continue to implore the developers to stick to their original intent of that 30-unit structure.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Are there further questions or comments from the public?
Counselor colleagues, Counselor Arroyo and Counselor Craig are members of the committee. So if you have limited topics, yep. And Jay, do you have this electronically?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bill Hannigan, 304 College Avenue. I oppose this project based on its size in this location. I've been tracking this since last August and have become informed to a degree, but I don't feel myself anything more than a layman. I did find the Historical Commission showed no interest in 50 people like myself who have invested a lifetime here and made very appropriate comments and made very reasonable questions. The idea that overall this is a multi-lot concept, not just 213, but 210 College Avenue. You go out, Marietta, you go on the West End side of the St. Joe's Hospital property, and you find that it could be 250 units added here, potentially 500 people. What impact will 500 people have on this neighborhood? I have to say that I think HDC is part of a piecemeal approach to this. Again, it's a multi-lot concept, but they just want to take a bite at a time, and nobody's looking at the wider view. I think HDC lacks easements so that their traffic can't happen, their pattern of traffic has to cross another property. They have no easement for that. This cannot proceed. This cannot move forward until we have fundamental steps in place, and they're spoken to and answered. To my satisfaction, I haven't heard this sort of a thing. I appreciate your time. I'll repeat, I oppose this project based on its size in this location. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Are there further comments or questions from the public?
Hello. Thank you for your willingness to hear dialogue and concern from neighbors about the 213 College Avenue project. The need to increase affordable housing options in our community.
Can I stop you for one second?
Sure.
Did you give us your name?
I did not. Michaela Allwine, 600 block of Chestnut Street, West Chestnut.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So the need to increase affordable housing options in our community is something that many neighbors, including my family, support. I work every day to further affordable housing in our community and appreciate the work that others are doing as well. But ensuring a neighborhood and those who live there are But ensuring a neighborhood and those who live there are safe is not the same as speaking out against a project. Unfortunately, some of the concerns, the safety concerns around this development have been overshadowed by the emotions around the need for affordable housing. I'd like to focus on the physical proposed structure of this development and how it interacts with the surrounding properties. A false narrative has been created that the proposed building is taking the place of existing structures, matching the existing footprints, and therefore has little to no impact on the accessibility of the properties facing Chestnut Street. And this is not the truth. We're fearful that the emergency access to the rear of our homes being blocked is not being taken seriously. An access alley has been proposed for the townhomes across College Avenue, being defended as necessary for fire truck access to reach each of those homes. Why is this not being considered for the affordable multifamily? While right now it's a grass pedestrian access, historically, there was an access alley there. And building a 50-foot-tall building on a footprint that is in some cases less than the recommended setback warrants the reinstatement of that alley. I understand the multifamily buildings are to have sprinkler systems, but our homes do not. We will be completely unable to access the rear of our home in case of an emergency, a fire, a fallen tree. Few, if any, other new construction projects have been allowed to happen so closely to existing residential, specifically for this reason. Other projects have been turned away. They've been denied zoning access because of those setbacks. Additionally, the parking deck the structure is being built above and using to access the side of the property in case of an emergency is currently not structurally sound enough to bear the weight of a fire truck. And if it is, we haven't seen that proof. We're scared at the combination of the proximity to our homes of the new structure and the inability to access the rear of the new building or our homes in case of a fire means for our safety. I'm completely supportive of affordable housing and I'm completely supportive of this project, as long as it's done safely. Council can both support this project, further affordable housing, and take measures to make sure it's a safer place to live. We're at an important time of need in our community, and it's even more pivotal that our development process be thoughtful and equitable, keeping the sustainability and longevity of our communities at the forefront of the process. I appreciate your time and dedication to this planning process. I know with this project specifically, there's been a lot of time dedicated to making sure that it's done correctly. And we just wanna make sure that it's done safely. I'm happy to answer any other questions or speak to our safety concerns further at your convenience. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there further questions or comments from the public?
Susan Pintus, 200 block of Elm Street. We're supposed to be talking about the Historic Commission's decision. And my concern is that the Historic Commission did not really take into account the effect of this building being behind historic homes. There are six Emlyn Urban Homes that are affected by this. How does it affect it? Can you see it from the street? Not necessarily. You can look between the buildings and see it. It's more about keeping the longevity of these homes in perspective. People need to want to maintain these homes. And not allowing them to have the 12-foot setback so that we have a sure way to provide fire safety instead of relying on somebody fixing a deck and maybe it'll happen, maybe it won't, we don't know, because that project is not on the table yet. So I would like to see at least the 12-foot setback. The other thing is, I don't believe anyone has set up any kind of maintenance agreements with the residents along this setback. So I believe they are required for some, for the zoning changes. So somebody should address that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Further questions from the public or comments?
Good evening. I'm Gary Weaver with Tippett's Weaver Architects. We've been working on the project for probably a year and a half at this point. We've been at many of these meetings. We've done many presentations. We've been before the Historical Commission for a conceptual review and also for a final review. That's really what we're here to talk about tonight. We got very positive reviews on the presentation of the project and our studies of the neighborhood and trying to be sensitive to the neighborhood. It is a large building, and there's no doubt about that. But this site had previously been zoned as an RO district and R4, both of which allow for a building at this scale of this height. And that's been zoning in this neighborhood for approximately 30 years. And so I think we can talk about whether it's appropriate size or not. But the reality is, the zoning ordinance has allowed for a building of this size for some time. It's not something new that all of a sudden we've gotten an approval for. Secondly, on the issue of fire access and safety, we're working through all of those reviews with the city. We're going through planning and working through all the issues with planning. We've been meeting with the Fire Bureau to work through any issues with fire access. And so to present the case that we're not working through those issues as we work through the project is just not accurate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver, for the clarification. Are there further questions or comments from the public? Hearing none. I motion to move this to full counsel on the 14th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Administration Resolution Number 50, Amending the Sewer Control Plan for Washington Place Equities Project at 210 College Avenue. And would that be you, Douglas?
Good evening, councilors. Douglas Smith, Chief Planner for the city. So before you is a sewer planning module, which is essentially providing capacity for the sewer needs of the redevelopment of the formerly St. Joseph's Hospital. I just wanted to be clear with you about what the scale was that was being requested. In this case, we have 171 total units that are being looked at for the hospital reuse portion, which is a maximum number. It's likely less than that. And 53 townhomes behind that. So along the streets of West Walnut Street, Northwest End Ave and Marietta Ave. So that's the sewer capacity that's being requested in this case. This has been determined to meet our comprehensive plan as well as our current zoning ordinance, which they've received some relief from. Our sewer engineer, Brian Harner, has reviewed this and has not identified any capacity issues in this area. So this is being recommended for approval. This land development is currently under review by planning staff, and there's at the moment no date for approval set.
Thank you, Douglas. Are there questions from the committee? Questions from council? Questions or comments from the public? Hearing none. I'm gonna make a motion to move this to full counsel on the 14th.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion of an easement agreement for Hankin Group LGH project. And I believe... Douglas?
I'm back.
You're back again.
Yes, Douglas Smith, Chief Planner for the city. And I will hand it off to Neil Fisher here in a moment, who is here to represent the development team from Hankin. So this is the redevelopment project that spans between North Prince Street and Queen Street via Frederick and North Market. And this project has been conditionally approved, final plan approval from the Planning Commission. One of the stipulations in those conditions was to receive an easement from City Council for use of the public right-of-way, which Neil can go over in a little bit more detail. You may be familiar with some of these if you've served long enough here. In some cases, we have balcony easements that are over the right-of-way, minor architectural easements, as well as footers from the building, which are partly underground but technically in the right-of-way there. And Neil can go into further detail on all of this. This plan is again recommended for, has been recommended as conditionally approved by the Planning Commission and is in the process of looking at building permits. So this is one of the important items to check off the list. Happy to answer any questions. But with that, I'll invite Neil up and I'm going to load up a presentation that he's going to use to review the project.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Fisher.
Good evening. Great to see everybody again. Douglas is actually, I think a lot of, sometimes it's easier to see with renderings, some of the details.
Well, that would be perfect. We appreciate the context.
But Douglas did provide a very, an excellent summary. This is a presentation that we did with the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago. Just, I ought to just double-check. Everybody remember the location, project location? I could give you a brief overview if you want, or we can kinda skip to the renderings.
Yes.
Skip to the renderings? Or a brief overview? Both.
Start at the top.
All right, so here's what you can see on your screen. It's approximately 3 and 1/2 acres. The site itself, we're bound by Frederick Street to the north, Prince Street to the west, Queen Street to the east. Market Street actually bisects the property right through the center. So that's the street that's running in north-south direction in the center of the property. Lancaster General Hospital, the seven-story parking garage is located on the east side. And to the west of the property is the Barnstorm Stadium. You kinda see that the property is shaped like an upside-down L. And right in that kinda notch is BPL substation. So that's kinda the one negative component that kinda surrounds the property. It's a great location. We had to make sure that we designed our project around that substation. There are four historic structures on the property. Three are located in, or sorry, three historic structures. They're located, they're shown in green. Two are at the intersection of Prince and Frederick. And then one is the Al Hill Learning Center over on Queen Street. And then there's one non-contributing structure that's located adjacent to that. So this is the project. And just to orient you again real quick, Frederick Street's across the top of this screen. Prince Street is on your left, and Queen Street's on the right. I'm gonna go around the project. I'm gonna start in the lower right-hand corner. The lower right-hand corner, you can see that there's a three-story medical office building. That's going to become future home of Lancaster General. They're gonna have urgent care. Possibly also physicians will be in there on upper floors. They're not fully planned out as far as all their uses on all their floors. But it is in close proximity to the other healthcare facilities that are located just east of the property. To the left of the medical building is a parking garage. So that parking garage services the entire project, the medical office building, the residential uses. And there's also another benefit, and that is that it is also screening the substation from, you know, for the project. To the north of the parking garage is a five-story mixed-use building. So in the first floor, it's on the two corners, one at the corner of Frederick and Queen, and the other at our driveway that's coming into the project, there's two retail areas. We really anticipate restaurant uses, things of that nature, coffee shop. We are targeting healthy living with the project. It's a theme that we're utilizing for this entire facility. Above that, on the upper floor, is residential. We'll also have our community space within the first floor along Queen Street. Really, our goal along Queen Street is to give it the appearance of a retail area, a revitalization of that portion of Queen Street. And then on the, so if we go west of Market Street towards the Barnstorm Stadium, you can see the two historic structures. One was the old tavern, and the other is the carriage house. They'll be restored. The tavern that's on the corner, the first floor will be retail. Again, we envision a restaurant could be, or a smaller restaurant, maybe a smoothie shop, something of that nature. And two residential units above. That's the way it's set up today. And that's, we're gonna stay with that same, the same thought process for the building. The tavern building is really, it's a garage on the first floor, or sorry, the carriage house. Is a garage on the first floor and residential above today. We're going to utilize the carriage house on the first floor for maintenance. But then on the southern portion or towards our courtyard, it'll be amenity space. We're going to actually open that up, and there'll be bathrooms and space that the residents can use. And then on the upper floors will be residential as well. The multifamily building that kinda wraps around this portion of the site is four stories. And that's something that we worked out with the Historic Commission. As we, if you remember, we had a lot of iterations in working with the Historic Commission to make sure that the buildings were oriented and shaped in a way that they found appealing as well. And we did, we received their recommendation and your approval of that. So we were very, very happy with the outcome and the final configuration of the project. One other thing I'll point out on this slide is that you'll see two courtyards. One on the west, which is kinda, is surrounded by the historic structures and the multifamily building. That's the pool area that will be served, that will serve the community there. And then on the eastern, it's contained within the five-story building. That's more of a passive area. There'll be lawn areas, grilling stations, things of that nature. But it's really intended to be a passive setting, a little bit of green and tranquility in an urban environment. So that's the overall, that's the project, right? This is the site plan for the project. We worked out a bunch of details with the Planning Commission as far as streetscape improvements, public art. We've been, we've looked at that, and we've actually provided some decorative fencing out. I can actually show you a detail of that at the end. It's something we did on another project, and it worked out extremely well. I think we can jump to the next one. Here's, so the projection easement is really what we're here for tonight, right? So if you look at the intersection, at the existing tavern building, right at the intersection here of Prince and Frederick, you can see that the steps, and there's a ramp associated with that. And the ramp's to provide handicap accessibility. To, you know, we wanna have that, the ability to have the commercial uses on that first floor. Today, they're just the stairs. That's the only thing that exists going up there. The ramp provides the ability to get accessibility to that first floor. That ramp and those stairs, the stairs today exist within the right-of-way. The ramp would also have to exist within the right-of-way. So that's one of the, that's an example of a projection into the right-of-way. Now, on Prince Street, the balconies along this side of the building has been, they do not project into the public right-of-way. Douglas, we can, yeah, thank you. So this is a corner of Queen and Frederick. So on the first floor, you're seeing the retail space. And we've notched that corner, and really, we've notched the corner on the first floor in order to engage the public and really hold on to the architectural style that's throughout this portion of Lancaster City. But you can see that there is, there are overhangs. If you look at the roof line, those overhangs that are up on the fifth floor, those are projections into the right-of-way. And then same with the balconies as you come down, correct? Those are projections into the right-of-way. Those are... If you look down, down the streets along... Those are, if, if, if you look down, down the streets along Queen Street, Frederick Streets, this is consistent with the way things have been constructed within this, within this environment. Actually, you can see the roof that's on the, the building adjacent, right? Yes, that's a, that's also a, a projection into the right-of-way. So this, we're staying with the, with the, the fabric of the, the existing area. And then here's the intersection of our driveway that kind of goes back into that, the parking garage. Again, you can see the overhangs that are at the top of the building and then the balcony projections. And then the last slide, oh, sorry. This is a, here you can see the, this was a image from inside the building looking at the courtyard. And then this is the Lancaster General Medical Office Building. And above the entryway, there's a canopy, and that canopy also would have, would project into the right-of-way. So these are the type, they're architectural projections. If, which, this is actually the last slide. You can see, if you look in the upper right-hand corner of the, of the screen, that is a, it's a cut metal that we are, we're proposing to use as a type of gate. This is the, this is some of the public art that's been proposed. So where this would be, be located is between the historic tavern and the carriage house, and then also again between the carriage house and the new building. Not the, not the roof, but the, the wall section of this cut metal would be the type of fencing instead of a normal fence. This fence would be, become the public art for the streetscape.
So, so you're, could you go back here for a second?
Sure.
You're saying that, that the, the fencing?
Yes. The cut metal.
It's gonna, yeah, the, it'll be located...
Douglas, can you highlight the, or the fence area? Right, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So that doesn't act, that's not a projection into the right-of-way. That's just, that's, that is a way of establishing that streetscape and to giving it a, you know, that curb appeal.
Thanks, Neil. So just to clarify, this was kind of just a fun detour. We'll, we'll go back to the site plan for a moment. And Neil, I just wanted to clarify more for the benefit of the, of the council. The easement that is being requested is basically a blanket easement around the building on Queen and Frederick. And that easement includes the projections that are shown detailed on the land development plan.
That's correct. But it would also include Prince because of the historic building.
And Prince, too.
For the, for the ramp.
In other words, the, the easement, although we don't have it up on the screen, I just wanted to verbally describe it for you, that it truly is something that wraps around the, those facades of the building. And would, they would not be permitted to do anything beyond what is described in the land development plan and shown in a survey drawing. So the easements are specific to the balconies that are shown, specific to the footers that are shown, specific to the architectural projections that are being shown on the plan.
And that includes all the buildings?
So it includes...
Yes.
Yes, portions of all of them, yes. So at this corner, the balconies, for instance, let me go back here, the architectural projections end up at the roof line as well as the balconies. And then going back here, the right-of-way use for the ramp and stairs. And projections here on Prince Street by the balconies.
Counselor Craig, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, just for clarification, when we talk about, in layman's terms, the projection of the balconies over the right-of-way, does that mean that the balconies are overshadowing the sidewalk?
Correct. So property boundary ends typically, building completely stops there. In this case, the facade of the building stops there, but then up above your head, those balconies would then be over a portion of the sidewalk. Yes.
Thank you for that. And just to follow up with that, are there typically safety concerns at all when there's a projection like that from a balcony?
There haven't been to date. Typically, what we review these for, for sightlines at ground level, so we want to make sure if there are projections out over the right-of-way, that from a distance pedestrians, drivers, et cetera, can see an approaching car at an adjacent intersection. We do consider them when it comes to other projections in the right-of-way or other things in the right-of-way. For instance, making sure that projections don't interfere with tree planting or lights or other things that have to happen there. And in this case, there weren't any safety concerns. These were reviewed by Public Works as well and our city engineer, Cindy McCormick. And beyond the intersection issues, which we reviewed and didn't find anything of concern there, there weren't any safety concerns.
The question I have for you, what do you think would be the impacts of this project on the community? Whether it's negative or positive impact?
And just to clarify, Counselor, the impact, not just of this easement, but of the whole, the project overall in terms of housing, economic development, those sorts of issues? Well, overall, I think that this is a really positive project. And I'm happy to also invite our Director Chris Delft if he wants to add to this. But there are, I think, 240 units that are being added here. Market rate, certainly, we know we're in the middle of a housing crisis, and additional units do, that additional supply does help to alleviate some of the extreme demand that we're seeing. So that is certainly a huge benefit. This has been an empty lot for, yeah, maybe six or seven or more years, eight years at this point. And certainly, this is a better use of, of this property, given that it's so close to the stadium and downtown and in between downtown and the train station. From a planning point of view, I certainly see this corridor as being a high priority area for, you know, adding additional housing. We've worked very collaboratively with the development team on this project. I am encouraged that we have a historic preservation element in this, and we were able to maintain that piece of unique Lancaster that we have. We also worked very closely with the developer on the redesign of North Market Street, which we think will be, will have a lot of benefits for pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles. They've done an exceptional job, I think, of accommodating a lot of our ideas and trying to live up to best practices in terms of the design of the streetscape and public realm. So I, I really, I guess this is a moment to say this project in a lot of ways has actually exceeded expectations, and that, that's a good thing. And I think that those, those, those things that they have been, that have been so successful here really will translate to the community in terms of making this a more enlivened block that is put to good use and hopefully brings new residents here to enjoy the benefits of Lancaster that we have.
Do people who live there know about the project?
Well, I can't speak for every person that lives there, but I do know the LGH, early on in the project, has, did do some outreach and flyering door-to-door and held a public meeting. Unfortunately, that was a bit untimely in the pandemic, but nonetheless, there were efforts made there. This project has been before the Planning Commission probably close to four times, four or five times throughout just the land development portion, in addition to, I think, five meetings with the Historical Commission, at least one meeting with the Zoning Hearing Board, and Traffic Commission as well, and Shade Tree Commission. So certainly in terms of board and commission engagement, they, they rank very highly. Thankfully, we have gotten some press coverage on this as well.
Do you know about any feedback that you have from the community?
I haven't, I, so typically, I hear things when residents are unhappy with a project. I, it's not often a resident might go out of their way to call me to tell me how much they appreciate a particular development. But I can say that I have received very few notices from residents about their concerns for this project. The ones that I did receive came very early in the proposal and were mostly regarding the historical preservation. And I believe that we met the mark on, on that front. And since then, I have not received any concerns from residents.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Counselor Aguiar.
Certainly. Are there any further questions from...
Counselor Craig, if I may, you had made a comment about the easement allowing for a ramp for ADA accessibility. Is that creating accessibility, maintaining accessibility?
Creating.
Creating, where there is none at present.
So if you, if you look at the screen, the stairs that are on the corner, that exists, those stairs exist today. So that, that first floor is not accessible. The ramp that, where you see the fence, that's, that's a ramp. It's intended, so if you, Prince Street is sloping one way, and that ramp will be coming down the opposite way. So we're trying to keep the ramp as short as possible, but the ramp will allow for accessibility into that retail space.
And then accessibility was taken into consideration for the remaining property as well.
That's, that's correct. It's a lot easier on the newer buildings.
I, I figured as much. Thank you so much.
Counselor Craig. Mr. Smith, can you clarify for anyone who's granted easements? What, if any, additional responsibilities does the property owner have for maintaining the area above the public right-of-way?
Sure. So I, and I can pull up the agreement if we, if we want to get into particulars here, but generally, they're required to keep it up to building code standards. So this would be reviewed by our building code staff. It would have to be constructed according to the 2015, excuse me, Construction Code. And if that work is permitted over the right-of-way, or if this easement is permitted over the right-of-way, they would have to work with us on installation in the right-of-way as well, or if any repair work needs to be done, that would need to be coordinated with our Public Works crew to close off sidewalks or streets if that's needed. The, the city and this, and most of the easements that we grant is held harmless from incidents that would involve this kind of infrastructure over top of the right-of-way. So that, that is a liability that the property owner takes on in terms of maintenance or, or anything that goes wrong there.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any further questions from council?
First, can you just orient me as to which street is which?
On this rendering here?
Yes, please.
Okay. Frederick Street is on, yes. And Prince Street, yes.
Actually, I'd be interested to know, can you tell me, because we will get asked, if you could dig, just to touch deeper into Douglas's response on what the community engagement activities were?
Sure. So if you remember back at the very beginning of the project, this project, property was zoned hospital complex. And we came before city council for, to rezone the project to mixed-use. So I'd say in that initial process, one, there, there was a public notice that was put out by the city as part of a rezoning process. In addition to that, Lancaster General also has a, a policy that when they do a project, they put out a public notice. I don't remember the radius that they, that the hospitals utilizes, but it's, it's certainly within, you know, the surrounding area, any residential properties. So they put out, this was during COVID, we did, so we, you know, we put flyers out on all of those residences along Frederick Street, Queen Street, Prince Street, Prince Street, I don't think there's any residences along Prince Street, but within a certain distance. This is where I'll say, I don't recall what that distance is, as roughly three years ago. So that was a, that was a public outreach. I had one neighbor call, and that was it. I explained to, explained to her the project, and she was happy. So I have not received any calls or complaints about the project. And now since then, we, we've gone through, as Douglas mentioned, numerous Historic Commissions. The project's been in the paper at least three times, probably more. And certainly all of the other committees and planning commissions.
Okay. Are there any, any further questions from council?
Ms. Craig, if I may. Just to say that this is on the agenda as, as a discussion item.
Yes.
Because the agreement was, it still needs to be finished, reviewed, and prepared by the solicitor and the resolution that would accompany it. For an easement of this, of this sort, it would be done by resolution of council. He anticipates, Solicitor Barry Handwerker anticipates that that agreement and resolution will be ready for the July 14th meeting. They were not, however, ready for this evening's meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
This is discussion, but with your approval, I would anticipate that that's going to be on the agenda for the 14th.
Okay. Good.
Counselor Craig, I'm so sorry. Mr. Harris, did you say July or June?
I'm sorry. June 14th. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just making sure I'm on the same page. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
I think I was starting to sweat there.
Questions or comments from the public? Perfect. Thank you. We've had a wonderful discussion.
Do we need to make a motion to move this to the discussion?
I think, so I think, hold on a second. Let me just ask.
Since the resolution would not be considered de minimis, right, or of minimal legal impact, do we need to move this forward to have a place on next Tuesday's agenda for the forthcoming resolution?
Actually, I don't think there's actually anything to move forward at this point, since it doesn't actually exist before you. However, I will take an, a, a recommendation from the committee to, to place something on the agenda when it's ready, if you, if you care to do that.
Perfect. Then I will recommend that we do place whatever we get ready to June 14th council meeting.
I think you can just say.
Second.
That is it. That's the motion.
And I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fisher. Thank you, Douglas. Council President, that concludes community planning.
Do we have other? Thank you, Counselor Craig. Do we have other visual presentations this evening? I can't see any. Okay. Sorry about that. While we're all sorting ourselves out, Counselor Walsh, Public Works.
Thank you, Council President. We have one item on the agenda for the Public Works Committee, and it is administrative in nature, and what it allows is for a grant application to be submitted in the amount of $225,000 from the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program for the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. And we have Director Campbell to speak further about it.
Very good. Thank you very, very much. There's not much more that I need to say than you've already said. But I will say, this is to be able to pay for the Parks Master Plan effort, which is currently being solicited on the streets right now, and hopefully will be ready for, to commence in the next month or two. We anticipate that the contract will cost about $325,000 to $327,000 to do. We've already received $75,000 from DCNR, and this, this grant application would allow us to have as much as $225,000 to apply towards that $325,000 project. We have already allocated $100,000 towards the project in our advance note, the, the bond advance note that we, that we got approval from council for about a month or so ago. And that would allow us to meet a 15% match, which would be required. And if we in fact get as much as the full $225,000, we would not need to use that whole $100,000 for, for the remainder of the, for the balance of the, of the Parks Master Planning effort. So this is really, I mean, as it is stated, it is grant money, $200,000. So this is really, I mean, as it is stated, it is grant money, $225,000. We're asking to be able to make the application for the mayor to be able to, to receive and manage the, the project as, manage the paperwork, to receive the funding as necessary. And I think that's just about it.
Any questions from other committee members? Questions from counsel as a whole?
Counsel Walsh, if I may?
Of course.
Just because you mentioned, and just so we have the same understanding, so we have $100,000 currently planned to spend or already invested?
It's, technically, it's already invested. It's planned to spend because we have not hired the consultant yet.
Okay.
But in order for us to go forward, while we're asking for money from the grant, that money would be able to kick in if we have not yet received the grant.
Right.
We already have $75,000, though, from DCNR.
Okay.
So we effectively have $175,000 that can go towards the project right now. If we get as much as the 225, plus the 75, we'll have $300,000 right there, and we would only need approximately $27,000 of the $100,000 that we've allocated.
Right.
So the balance, 73, could return or could be used for other things.
Did you mention, was, did you mention what the match requirement was and what the percentage was?
15%, which would be of a $300,000 project, that would be approximately $50,000.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh.
Any questions from the public? All right, then I will make a motion, a motion to move Administrative Resolution Bill Number 49, 2022 to full counsel.
Second.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And that concludes our committee.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. We go then to, we go then to the Economic Development, Economic Development Committee, Counselor Arroyo.
Thank you, Counsel President. I have a brief update in regards to the Housing RFP for the American Rescue Plan funds that the City Council has allocated for affordable housing projects. In partnership with our selected consulting firm, PFN, city staff have completed a draft of the Housing RFP and are in the final stages of review and analysis. The expectation is that this request for proposal will be advertised to the public by the end of June, and once finalized, the RFP will allow potential respondents to apply for these funds. We anticipate the selection and review process will take place through the end of the summer. More to come as we finalize the, the RFP. That concludes my update, Counsel President.
I'm sorry, Counsel Arroyo, just for my benefit, we anticipate having, so when you say by the end of June, do we anticipate having like an RFP product ready to go out and be published by that time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And again, thank you, Counselor Arroyo. That brings us to the Committee of the Whole. We'll begin with Council Bill Number 12, Admending the Human Relations Ordinance to Ban Discrimination Based on Natural Hairstyles. You've probably heard some of this nationally, but it was Counselor Craig who brought this to council's attention. So if there's anything you'd like to share on the matter, Counselor Craig?
Thank you, Counsel President. This bill was in reference to the Crown Act, which stands for Creating a Respectful and Open World for Natural Hair. It was created in 2019 by Dove and the Crown Coalition in partnership with then-state Senator Holly Mitchell of California. The law prohibits race-based hair discrimination, which is the denial of employment, educational opportunity, housing, and things like that, because of hair texture or style such as locks, braids, or just natural hair. The proposed legislation seeks to amend the City of Lancaster's Human Relations Ordinance. The, the fact that we still, in 2022, have to, to do these sorts of things is somewhat disheartening, but I'm happy to have the tools in place and that we are willing to take the necessary steps to apply these tools. You know, I think this is long overdue. We probably should have taken care of this and done this long ago, 2022, and people are still giving people of color grief about their hair, when the hair on top of your head has absolutely nothing to do with what's going on in your head. Most people don't even consider it. You know, I can't say that I've had anyone discriminate against me openly because of my hair, and, and quite frankly, I wouldn't care, you know. But, you know, in 2022, we really just need to get over it. I'm done.
Thank you, Counselor Craig. Wise words. Are there other council comments on, yeah, other, well, other committee comments, which is all of you, on Bill Number 12? Which, for context, as a reminder, is a change to an ordinance, and so could not be passed until the first council meeting of July.
Counsel President, I would just like to thank Counsel Craig for bringing this forward and to our attention, and, you know, we, we, as a city, like to pride ourselves of having a fairly progressive human relations ordinance, and I think that this has been an omission that, I agree, has been long overdue. And anything we can do to protect folks from discrimination, from employment, is important and necessary. Thank you.
I'll briefly mention, I got publicly embarrassed at the, in like a good way, at the Martin Luther King Breakfast two years ago, in 2020, I believe. We had a speaker who was just over the moon. He happened to be sitting there, and he was like, wow.
I was there.
Yeah, y'all got somebody on City Council who has dreadlocks. And, you know, as a, as a black man who had indeed made his whole way in the banking world with, I'm sure with a variety of like high-end tighter close-shaved haircuts, was really excited to see that. I think that, that matters a little bit. Are there other council comments? From the public? Oh, thank you. Okay. Can I do these by acclamation, Counselor? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Sorry, I should have clarified, but the, the motion in question is to move to the June, June 14th meeting. I'm gonna get a, I'm gonna get the hang of this here sometime around my fifth year.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, there should be motion second, then the affirmation.
Did we not already do that?
No.
May I hear a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for humoring me both the first and the second time, members of council. That brings us to Council Resolution Number 51, 2022. Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. That is a resolution recognizing World Refugee, Refugee Day and Immigration Heritage Month.
Do we have anybody here to speak to this?
Not tonight, but I anticipate that we will on the 14th.
Okay. Well, why not? We absolutely should, and I know we, I feel like we say this every other breath, but this is a community that is made up of immigrants and indeed made famous by our, by our welcome of refugees, and indeed folks with different experiences, unimaginably different experiences make every institution in our community richer. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but of course, I would be remiss if I did not mention just the incredible wisdom and poise that Counselor Kleekst brings to City Council, coming to us from Haiti by way of Mexico, where he was a professor of law and legal studies, which a lot of folks don't know, so just gonna keep eye on that one. Anyway, would anybody like to make a motion to add this to the agenda for June 14th?
I'll motion to move this to full counsel on June 14th.
Second.
Okay, great. We have a motion and a second. Are there other council comments on this bill, or resolution, I'm sorry? Other questions or comments from the public? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll see that one next Tuesday. And then, finally, we have Council Resolution Number 52, 2022, Recognizing June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month, and I realize I've stolen your thunder, Mr. Harris, my apologies.
I was not planning to read it, Mr.
Okay, great. Fantastic. We'll be hearing more about this, of course, on the 14th, but as you are all well aware, June 14th is LGBTQ, no, not June 14th, June is LGBTQ+ Pride Month. I want to, of course, thank the mayor for raising the flag over the visitor center. And take a moment just to remind us that where pride begins is in an unruly and frankly, illegal action taken against institutional oppression faced by members of our community who specifically were African-American and, and Latino. And as we exist in this climate where folks are doing their level best to push information about both LGBTQ+ individuals and Black history out, out of our schools, I think this is as important as any other year. I'll step off my soapbox. Is there a motion to add this to next Tuesday's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Council comments? From the public? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. That concludes our committees this evening and leaves us only, last but not least, with the report of the clerk, Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Excuse me, some of the things I've done in the last month. I researched and wrote the Resolution Recognizing World Refugee Day and Immigration Heritage Month. I prepared the Pride, Pride Month Resolution and, well, the Act 537 Sewage Plan Amendment Resolution. The code supplement, excuse me, we, I updated the code book within my office. I distributed printed copies of the updates to the Magisterial District justices that serve the city as part of that update, and the code has been updated online to include the ordinances that were approved last year and the beginning of this year. So the code is now updated through the end of March of this year. That's the, the annual update of that. I attended the Lancaster Parking Authority meeting on May 26 and provided you with a summary of that discussion. And I've done my usual tasks of communicating with council members and updating the council chamber's calendar and posting minutes and agendas and other information online.
Okay. Thank you very much. As always, we could not do it without you. I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a good evening.